Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a joint meeting with our Planning Commission, which is why there are so many people here this evening. This is the regular study session for Tuesday, February 7th, 2022, 2023. The time when we started was 7:00 PM. I'm gonna ask that our clerk call the roll. So clerk Wykoff, please go ahead and you must be seat 11. Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough. For the record, Councilmember Davis is attending remotely. Planning Commissioners present and establishing a quorum are Commissioners Walker, Dawkins, Bull, Blair, Lockhart, and Lewis. And for the record, Commissioner Lockhart is attending remotely. Did I miss anyone?
As clerk Wykoff mentioned, are we missing anybody? All right, looks like we got everybody. For the record, we'll let the we'll let folks know that Councilmember Gamble called us this evening earlier this evening. Said that he would not get this evening due to work-related matters. Unless there's objection, we will consider his absence as excused. Any objections? All right, saying none. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Scarborough to please leave this in the pledge. Thank you, Councilmember. So before we begin into the agenda, you'll for the council members, you're gonna note that each one of you has shared microphone. I don't I suspect with Planning Commission, you usually have your own microphone as well. So we're gonna be sharing microphones this evening. I'm going to invite everybody to please turn on your microphones. Remember, red means go. Green means stop. So if you are red, that means that we can hear you on the recording. During the meeting, if you'd like to speak, I'd like you to raise your hand and make eye contact with me. I'll I'll give you a little head nod if I've got your name written down. I don't have my usual thing that things log in automatically. So this I'll be using paper and pen. Some of you remember what these are. So this is a stylus and don't get this wet. All right, and when we get around to presentation, I'm going to ask that our presenters sort of pause in between the slides when there's a natural pause. There may be a couple cases where a couple slides go by before there's a natural pause. I would like them to be able to complete their presentations. So rather than having a series of detours during the presentation, what I'd like to do is just try to try to take them sort of topic by topic. There are two questions at the end. If you do not engage in those two questions, I will go around the table. I do encourage everybody to speak. It's important that we hear from everybody, including people that might feel a little bit shy about chiming in on something. So if if I feel that it's warranted at the end, I might kind of go around person by person to get answers to the questions that will be raised by our consultant team and by our staff. All right. Oh, if you're online this evening, please use the raise hand function. I will not be giving you a head nod because you will not notice that I'm giving you a head nod. I would like to make certain that Commissioner Lockhart and Councilmember Davis can hear me. If you can, please raise your thumbs. Okay, sounds good. You're both on mute right now, so I think we're good there. And I've given permission to clerk Wykoff to throw something at the back of my head if if I miss either of you online. So Deborah, our Administrator Knight here has a bag of ice, just in case that hap- when that happens. Okay. Now we've taken care of all of that. I'm gonna go ahead and turn on everybody's microphones. And again, remember that the microphones are active when they are red. And when it is your turn to speak, I would ask, I do ask you to move the microphone from your partner and to you. All right, there may be a limit on the number of microphones that I can engage. We are limited to five. So you are limited to five. So we will figure this out as we go. Let's do this for now. Turn off your microphones and we will go back to what we normally do, which is if you want to speak, catch my attention and then hit your microphone. And when it turns red, it means it's your turn to speak. All right. Okay. Any questions before I get moving on that from anybody, including staff or our consulting team? And I haven't been hit from behind yet, so we're good. Okay. All right. The next item that we have on our agenda this evening is item number three. This is pledge. I'm sorry, item number four. This is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker if you'd like to speak this evening. I am going to be inviting you to the to the podium, which is right back there. We do have one person who signed up to speak and that person's name is Richard Bynum. Our clerk will go ahead and bring up the three-minute timer. And Richard Bynum, if you could please approach the podium and state your name on the record and area of residence or your association with the city of Monroe, and then we'll start the timer. Oh, just a second. Could you do me a favor and push that button on the base of the microphone for me? Because I don't know who who which one that is tonight. There we go. And please start again. Thank you.
My name is Richard Biden. I own Maston Properties and Construction. I do a lot of the infill building here in town. I come before you just for a like a weird situation with the multifamily residential zoning R25. The issue is when I submit for a project, the city looks at it and says there's three houses on one piece of property because I use the Washington State Condo Act to subdivide it. So when I submit, they see no property lines, just three buildings. So part of the city is triggering commercial as if I'm an apartment or a office building. So if we can and it but if I did fee simple and had those lines drawn beforehand, none of the commercials things would apply. The biggest thing is we're trying to create entry-level housing. When you trigger commercial, it adds about $18,000 per house that doesn't benefit the homeowner. So I'm just asking if we can get a definition change that just says if we're in result is residential, then we just stay in residential. And that's pretty much the issue.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council this evening? Okay. And if you're online and would like to speak to the council, please either hit star nine if you're on the telephone or do the raise hand function on your Zoom account. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? All right, and I'm just gonna check with clerk Wykoff. Nobody. All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be council member reports. And I will go ahead and start with council member Fulter. I'm sorry, I'm gonna start online with council member Davis. I've because his name tags in front of me. Councilmember Davis, do you have any council member reports this evening?
Nothing really to report. I just sorry that I missed last week's meeting. I had COVID. Over that, but I'm having lingering issues now. My wife also contracted COVID. So out of abundance of caution, I'm staying home and not coming to the meeting. Wish I was there. But I'm not I'm not anxious to pass this on at all. So anyways, bear with me as I work through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. All right. And then I'm noticing that there are a couple of spare microphones. So if you're sharing a microphone and would like your own, go ahead and grab a microphone. Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
I don't have any activities to report, but I would like to get a further understanding on Mr. Bynum's comments on the multifamily versus the condo act. If if our goal is to provide more affordable housing and there's a way to meet that goal, then if we could just put that on a further agenda, maybe get a little discussion going on, maybe on a study session.
Okay, sounds good. I'll have staff go ahead and get some more information about that and at least send an email to council and then follow up in a council meeting and see about adding that to a future agenda. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that there has been some activity around the Buck houses recently. These are the two homes on Anne Street that we've been trying to save. And we've had some inquiries from some folks in the San Juan Islands that might be interested in moving them over for affordable housing. So wanted to report on that and was excited about that. And also really enjoyed Sunday night. There was a film series that began here in Monroe, a Galaxy Theater, to celebrate Black History Month. It was organized through the Black Student Union at the high school and Monroe Equity Community, and it was really worthwhile. I encourage all of you to go out each Sunday night this month and attend those films. They're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I support with what council member Fulter said or proposed just now. And then I all I too went Sunday night with my son to support the Black Student Union and it's very really good to be there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. And Councilmember Kenny, why don't you take the microphone in front of you? You don't know it, but it's got your name on it. And Councilmember Fulter, same thing with you. And then Councilmember Fisher, you can keep that microphone. And then I think everybody's actually got the microphone that has their name on them at this point. So yay. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. And so we will now go ahead and move to our city administrator report with the extended agenda. Administrator Knight, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. There is not that much to report. The next two meetings and two committee meetings have been canceled. I'll keep to put the next one on there. Thank you so much for doing that. So looking forward to the end of the month, then. For February 28th, we will be having a P3 committee meeting starting at 6:00 PM. We do have a couple of just housekeeping items, electing the chair and the 2023 work plan. And then the downtown parking assessment, which is something that has been funded in the 2023 budget. And then looking forward to the regular business meeting, we do have a police swearing-in ceremony at the beginning of the meeting. A number of consent agenda items, including an interlocal agency agreement with Snohomish County for Human Services being paid for out of the first responder flex fund and then authorizing the mayor to accept the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement plan number one project and approving to release retainage. And then the ILA with Snohomish County for the Blueberry Park Grant. We received $100,000 from county councilmember Sam Low to help support the Blueberry Park improvements. Going under unfinished business, we have Kate Turtlow coming back to talk about the preferred housing allocation method that Snohomish County is asking for input on. And then our regular reports from our department directors.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions about the extended agenda? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Knight, do you have a date yet for the traffic calming devices that we talked about last week?
Yes, actually, I spoke to Jacob Roberts about that, and he will be providing the council with an update on the 28th, February 28th.
Thank you.
That project is moving forward, by the way.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions about the extended agenda? All right, any updates regarding your availability during the council meetings, especially within the extended agenda to confirm quorum? All right, thank you very much, everybody. We're now going to move on to the general city administrator report, Administrator Knight.
You're you're all. That's all. That's all good. And I think I reported to the council at last week's meeting about the bill tracking, so I won't repeat that information this evening. And I don't think I have anything specific. Oh, we need a motion. Oh, excuse me. So we do need a motion to waive council rules or procedures to take action during the study session. That's this meeting this evening. And then a motion to cancel the February 21st Human Services or excuse me, Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting and the council study session.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
Point of clarification is that move to waive council rules or procedure to take action during study session to apply to the 28th.
Okay, got it. Clever. Well, since I have the the floor, I will go ahead and move to waive council rules and procedures to take action during this study session this evening.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulter, a second from Councilmember Penny, to move the way the council rules procedure to take action during tonight's study session. Any discussion on the voting? There being none, we'll move the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes six here. Thank you, Councilmember Fulter.
Hey, I might as well. I'd like to move to cancel the February 21st, 2023 Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting and the council study session that evening as well.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulter, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the request of action, which is the 1234th bullet on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, move the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six here. Thank you, everybody.
All right, Administrator Knight, do you have anything further?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the mayor's report. And just a couple of items. First, I did issue a proclamation for Black History Month. That is in your packets. I also posted that on the mayor's Facebook page earlier today. I also attended as part of Black History Month, a the same movie that was held about Harriet Tubman on Sunday. I really enjoyed learning more about Harriet Tubman and really appreciate the work that the Black Student Union and also that Monroe Equity Committee has been doing to help educate and celebrate, help educate us and help celebrate the month. So I thank you all. You'll note in my proclamation that I'm asking folks this month to learn more about the truth of our history, which includes the difficult truth that for some reason we don't like to talk about, and we need to understand those truths. And I'm also encouraging people to to also celebrate people who are black and African Americans here in our community and nationally. So I would encourage people to go to the next to the next movie. I think there's one this coming Sunday also. And I understand that there's one, I think, every Sunday this month. So go ahead. And if you have any questions about when that is, you can't find it online or something, reach out to me. I'll be happy to help provide you with that information. I also have in the packets Monroe this week, both for the last two weeks. So I invite you to look at that material. I do thank Councilmember Davis for actually, who was it that facilitated the meeting last week? Councilmember Davis was out. Okay, I think Councilmember Gamble for facilitating the meeting last week. I was I was out visiting family. Well, it's Councilmember Hanford. You know what? I thank you all for working together to make certain a meeting happened. Thank you. Okay, and then a couple of other items. One Administrator Knight and our new intern, okay, are gonna be heading to Olympia this Thursday to meet with a couple of our representatives down in Olympia. We'll be talking about State Route 522 and a couple other items. So again, it's consistent with the legislative agenda that the council has adopted. And we talked about some specific items around policing at our committee meeting earlier this evening. But we're staying in close contact with our legislators. Also, just letting folks know, if you haven't heard already, 522, the funding that we that we ended up getting last year for 522 has been pushed back. As you all know, actually, the Planning Commission would know also you have a CIP or a TIP that's multiple years. We had some funding that the state legislature put into a an upcoming year for, I think it was $10 million or something like that. The governor's recommended budget has moved that out to a future year. Again, if you think of a five or six-year CIP instead of next year or the year after, it's been moved out to a later year. And so what we are doing is we are trying to resecure funding in earlier years. Senator Brad Hawkins has been working with us to to help us generate forms requesting money and also having that money spent for specific things for right-of-way acquisition and for design and engineering. So he's putting in, I think, a $40 million request in a much closer year than what the governor brought forward. We're hopeful that something will be put in there since we've been working on this project for a couple decades now. But just letting you know that if you have any relationships with any representatives that I invite you to go ahead and reach out to them, and this is something that if I'm not here, because I don't think this will be built in the next three years. If I'm not here outside of those three years, somebody else is gonna need to, a group of people will still need to be working on this issue to make certain it comes to fruition. So every one of us needs to understand what's going on and continue pushing forward on this. Okay. Let me see, what else? I we are going, the reason why we canceled next week's meeting is we do have three council members, myself and a couple other folks from staff attending the Association of Washington Cities next week. So if you are interested in carpooling or something, if you could please email Jody and let Jody know. Maybe by Thursday this week, I'd greatly appreciate it. We and and if you're planning on going down by yourself, it'd be helpful to know. If something's changed, please let us know because we do have hotel rooms set up for Tuesday night and Wednesday night. We're also working on dinner with the 12th Legislative District for Wednesday night and for Snohomish County cities on Tuesday night. We are still trying to get responses from the 12th Legislative District cities. I don't think they're used to doing this. As everybody knows, the 12th Legislative District used to be on the east side of the mountains. It's now on the east and west side of the mountains, and all of our representatives are from the east side of the mountains. So we're trying to develop relationships, not only with our representatives, but also with the cities that share the legislative district with us. And then lastly, council members, there is the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC at the end of March. If you're interested in attending that, please reach out to Jody by tomorrow morning. If the packet of material is not there in front of you, she can, it is there. Perfect. Please take a look at that flyer. Please get back to Jody by Thursday this week if you're interested in attending because the the rooms there do fill up quickly. And the goal in any one of these conferences is to try to get try to stay in the same place where the conferences are occurring. As part of that Strategy 360, who we contract with for our federal government affairs, will be working to set up meetings to talk about the railroad crossings to get federal money for the to help share with making silent crossings here in town. That's four gates instead of two allows trains, if they want to, to go faster through town, which is nice. But it also keeps them where they can be quiet, which would be really nice, especially for the hospital, which is right next to one of those crossings. I'm sure it's safe to be operated on while the horn is blowing. So we will also be talking about 522 and Highway 2, including the trestle. We may also talk a little bit about human services, although we've been receiving some funding and resources from the federal government and the state government to help out with our with some of the human services work we're doing here to help people who are residents who are unhoused and also residents who have mental behavioral health and chemical dependency issues. So if anybody has any questions about any of that, let me know. And when I did attend NLC a couple of years ago, I think that was 2019 or 18, I did find it useful and it was nice being able to visit a couple of members of Congress and also federal staff to talk about some of the issues that we were dealing with here. Lastly, council members, there is a if if like too many of you want to go, then we may need to talk about budget and everything like that. So if a couple of you are interested in going, let us know, though. All right. Okay, any questions, comments, or good jokes for me? All right, but I'm bump. I like that. All right, we are now gonna move into item seven. This is discussion items 7.1, 2024 to 2044 Comprehensive Plan kickoff joint meeting with Planning Commission. And all right, it has your name. Okay, we're gonna go to Director Bailey. Director Bailey, you have the floor.
I had bad jokes, but I'm not gonna. I'm not. Anybody wants bad jokes, you know, you know where to find me. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council and Planning Commission. This is the first meeting that I've been involved in where we've had a joint meeting. So it's it's really great to see everybody together. And it's great to have this opportunity to have this discussion and presentation about the the comprehensive plan. As you know, just a week ago, we were staff was presenting sort of the framework for how the plan is put together, some of the the pieces that were mandated to address by the state and and other regional agencies. And and so hopefully that we'll be able to build on that this this evening to talk about some work that's that has been done up to this point and some things that we the next steps to to be working on as well. And as and as the mayor mentioned, there's a couple of questions at the end that will hopefully have a a good discussion with everybody involved. They're they're easy questions, but they're weighty in their in their substance. So with that, I'd like to introduce Sue Garner and Alex Dupie, who are the the leads for the for Meg, who were the general, I guess, general contractors for the for the plan is. And I would remind every everybody, if the very last slide that we presented at that that staff presented at the last meeting had the list of all the subcontractors that are involved in this as well. So there's a whole lot of people behind this effort. And with that, I will I will turn the turn the floor over to to our big team.
Perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Alex Dupie. I'm a principal with MIG. We are a planning, engineering, excuse me, we are engineering, planning, engineering, public engagement and urban design firm. We are based in Seattle, Portland, Berkeley, Denver, among a few other cities. So we span a number of different geographies. And a lot of what we do is comprehensive planning. We do comprehensive planning in Washington, but also in much larger cities, including Charlotte, North Carolina, San Antonio, Denver, other places as well. So the the information that we've been have begun to gather really informs some of the best practices that we brought from other parts of the country in terms of engagement for very diverse communities, but also looking at different ways that we can talk about analysis. How do we actually plan for growth and transportation and public facilities? And all of those components that the state of Washington requires as a part of its comprehensive planning process, but potentially in ways that might be different that than you've seen in previous comprehensive plans. So we have a brief presentation that we're gonna step through some of the preliminary work that we've done just to bring you up to speed. We are just beginning this process and had a great series of individual interviews with folks today to get more of a sense of the Monroe community. And we expect we're gonna be in front of you many times over the the next 18 months or so. All right, are we up? All right. There we go. So as as the mayor mentioned, we'll step through and we'll give you an update on just some of the preliminary work that we've done. Much of this is background information that we use as a part of the comprehensive plan process. And we'll take a pause after each one if there's questions to to move through that. We have about 25 slides or so, which sounds like a lot, but we'll go through some of those some of those pretty quickly. But really, our goal today is just to give you an update. Much of this information will be put on our project website, which will debut this evening with you. But also, it's just a way for you to kind of see some of that background work that we've been we've been doing and how we'll move forward in the future. All right, so let's see. That's the problem. Multiple hands. Help me soon. That's a little ahead. We're not quite there yet. Yeah, don't look at that. There you go. All right. Perfect. Okay, maybe so you can just, I won't touch it. All right. So I'm just quick through this. So tonight, so we'll we'll talk about the introduction of plan update. Kate gave a presentation last week, so I won't cover too much of what she said. We'll talk about project schedule and the major elements of the project. And then these are the key elements that we want to talk about tonight, which is the plans review. Previous documents that you've done as a part of the planning process to make sure those are integrated. We have done an inclusive planning assessment of your comprehensive plan. So we'll talk about what that means. Some of that is required of GMA. Others are pieces that we've we've dug into a little bit more in depth, just knowing, you know, where the city is going to make sure that we're incorporating all of your discussions. We've done a regulatory audit. What does that mean in terms of Growth Management Act? PSRC, the county, in terms of how that relates to your comprehensive plan? We'll talk briefly about a baseline conditions analysis, which is essentially mapping. We'll explore the project website and we'll talk about our equitable engagement plan. So lots of stuff we'll step through in the next steps. All right. So let's just talk briefly about comprehensive planning in Washington. So just as a reminder, and I know Kate showed this last week. The comprehensive plan is your city's guiding document. We use it essentially as a We use it essentially as a twenty year vision and policy and action plan for the city that's updated approximately every eight years. I mean, that's required by the state ten years, keep changing every ten years. It's updated about every ten years and that is required by the state of Washington to update that on a regular basis. And it's important to do that because policies change, actions are completed. And you have new documents or evolving development that must be addressed as a part of that. So we are within that periodic review for comprehensive planning. There are a number of other pieces within the comprehensive plan. You have downtown sub area plans, you have corridor plans. You also have your municipal code, which actually implements the comprehensive plan itself. So. When we think about comprehensive plan, it's really the guiding document. Pieces like the municipal code and specific projects are how you implement those policies and actions. So it's, it's visionary, but it also provides that guidance for your more actionable documents. Next slide. There are some required elements. The most. The ones where you see the most change typically land use and housing, housing is both, you know, a local issue, a regional issue, but also a conversation within the state legislature as well. Again, about how you implement that both from a production strategy, but also from an equitable distribution and how you look at that. So those, that'll be a key element of our, our comprehensive plan analysis. We're also looking at capital facilities as a part of this process. We are updating the sewer water and stormwater master plans as well as the transportation plan. So this is not just the comprehensive plan. This is all of the facility plans that support that. And there are other elements that are optional, but that we're also looking at. One is economic development. We're completing a market analysis and an economic development strategy as a part of the comprehensive plan. You just completed your parks and recreation and open space plan that we actually did earlier on, but we're updating that in terms of impact fees. And then other pieces, climate change, that's a new one that, that. There are some new requirements that we're looking at. And so that will be also a part of this, this edit or this amendment. I want to just bring out, you know, as we think about that next slide is fine. I want to just bring out as we think about the comprehensive plan, the Imagine Monroe vision. You know, this is front and center with, with the plan. It's a piece that we. Take full heartedly as a part of this process as really a way to help guide some of the conversations we have with the community as a part of the next, you know, several months when we start to develop. Scenarios and strategies and eventual actions. I'm not going to step through what the vision is, but I just want you to be aware that this is an important element. And this is one that has framed and will continue to frame many of the discussions that we're already starting to have with. Both of you as well as, as the community in the coming weeks. So again, a very important statement and one that helps organize where we're going in the future. Slide. So let's talk just a bit about, sorry, should I slow down?
I don't see anybody raising their hand. So I think we're good.
I realized we wanted to pause and I just can't.
Just make eye contact and we're good. Yeah.
All right. Thanks. So let's talk about project process just briefly. So we have. A process, and I know this is a complicated graphic, but it's one that essentially lays out what we're doing through December twenty twenty four. And I'm not asking you to memorize this. I'll step through each major phase in this next element. But it, but it is one, you know, if you can print out and you can look at, and it's also an important element. And that's different than some schedules in that this is a little bit more user friendly if you have it from a public perspective, because it lays out kind of the general. Flavor of what the process is. So I'll step through the phases. Just briefly, we are in phase one, which is initiation and information gathering. So we started this project about six months ago. We have done a bunch of pre-work, as I said, looking at, you know, existing demographic analyses. We've been looking at some of the regulatory elements. We've also been looking at your plan from what that means from an inclusive community standpoint. Does it actually meet that, that vision statement? Or are there questions that we might have for your existing planning frameworks? We've evaluated all of those elements and Sue will talk about that in just a little bit. But I'm really starting to set the tone for how we move forward. Next. We are just starting this as of today, speaking to specific individuals or groups or parties that. Have a vested interest in various elements of the community, whether that could be outreach to the Latino community, it could be the school district. We're talking to businesses and residents, service providers. You know, developers, people who have, you know, an interest in the community and what its potential outcomes might be. And the reason why we do that is because it helps us understand context from a variety of perspectives. Of what we're, what we're kind of getting ourselves into both as a team and as a city as we start to delve into. More some of the, the difficult questions of growth and change and evolution over time of the community. So it doesn't mean that it's. Every perspective, but it's many different perspectives that helps us organize our thoughts on what that outreach and that analysis might work like. We are just starting our market and housing analysis. We're looking at comparable cities. So how does Monroe stack up to other cities that are similar? How do we compare in terms of an economic development strategy? So help us again provide that foundation and baseline. The next slide. And then base mapping, I'll show some examples in a moment. We do have a web map. On the website that has a bunch of different demographic and land use information, just to give you a flavor of some of the information that we're, we've been starting to gather. And then the project website, which we'll be showing in just a bit. So it's this initial phases, kind of the setup. Getting, getting ready to go and then also starting to actually do some of the base level analysis. I'll pause there.
Perfect. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. In the base, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Lewis. I just need to find the right light. There we go.
So when you're talking about your reaching out to the community. Are we making sure that we're reaching out to our non-English speaking residents as well?
Yes, we are. We'll actually talk about that a little later in the presentation, but we, we are. Directly doing, doing that now. And in fact, some of our early interviews today was what are the best avenues to be able to do that? I think it's, it's very important for this process and it's also important to talk to students and kids, you know, folks who. Don't go to meetings or, you know, unless they're drugged by their parents to go there. And so we really wanted to get as many multiple perspectives as we can.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Thank you.
I appreciate you making certain you're prioritizing. People who are younger too, students. I think one of the things that we all need to remember is that we're planning, this is a plan that's ten to twenty years in the future. And this, this really, we're, we're planning for people who aren't sitting in these chairs right now. So hearing from the people that are going to inherit the plans that you end up approving is, is really valuable. I appreciate that.
They will tell you many different things than you ever expected to hear.
They will.
Maybe you want to hear, maybe you don't.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments at this point on? The presentation up to here? Did I understand the base map, base mapping is available online? If people want to get in and start looking at data?
It is, and we'll show a quick link. Well, we won't step through all the maps, but we have a web map that has both mapping as well as infographic. And so. A lot of that is pulled from either census or other, you know, current data. And we'll be using that for both the market analysis as well as actually. Starting to think about implementation from our equity approach as we move forward. What can we test from a quantitative standpoint?
If people have, coming out of this meeting, they suddenly have a brainstorm of, hey, this would be really great if you did outreach to this group or using this method. Who should they contact? Would that be? Okay.
I'd start with Lance and then he can go with us.
Okay. So if, if coming out of this meeting, you've, you know, you think about something after the meeting, please reach out to Director Bailey and get that information as to. Places we might be missing, or you just want to make certain this is in the list. Right? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So as we, as we start to close down phase one and phase one will go for a few more weeks as we wrap market analysis and start to get into that initial outreach. Phase two is really about scoping for the CIPA analysis, which we'll have to do as a part of this process. But also this will be our initial community outreach and having a public kickoff, which we're planning on late March, early April. To avoid, you know, spring break and those, those pieces, but we want to make sure that it is. As approachable as possible, but also that it's both in person and online. So that we'll have, not everybody goes to meetings, but not everybody, you know, likes to do surveys. So trying to gather as many folks as possible through multiple platforms. We are, as a part of that, we'll start to develop scenarios and I'll show us a couple of slides and just a bit about what scenario planning is. But part of the comprehensive plan is having to be able to address growth that the city has to accommodate based on Snohomish County and PSRC. And you know, as it starts to trickle down into the city, how do you accommodate more population and employment? And so we use scenario planning as a way to do a series of what ifs. Without having to go through revising your land use map, you know, be able to target a bunch of different options and then bring you those choices to be able to make decisions about. We use that kickoff meeting as a way to start talking about that vision and, and how growth should occur. So that's, that's this next phase. We will start to launch into some more specific economic development strategies. That's a direct outcome of the market analysis, but also starts to tie to what those potential land use strategies might be in terms of growth and, and employment. And then looking at other pieces, climate, parks and public facilities that starts to get into some of your specific element planning. But also for our engineering team, we have a, a large team because many of them focus on either water or sewer or storm or transportation. Getting that information to them so that they can be able to do that analysis as well. And that also includes climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. So we'll be looking at that in this phase. And then as always, a regular advisory committee meetings, we will be establishing an advisory committee for this project. That's in process. And then also regular check-ins with both planning commission and city council. One is we want to make sure that we don't surprise you with anything as it comes up, but also your regular input is incredibly important to make sure that we're on the right track. But also that you're hearing from the public about what, what those outcomes are from the various, you know, kind of events and other. Things that we'll be doing through this phase. So I'll pause there.
There any questions from commissioners or council members? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker, if you could. I'm sorry, Commissioner Walker.
Oh, yeah, I just, I feel like it's going to keep coming up. So base mapping is, and I'm sorry if that's a.
It's a plenary term apology. We're doing that. It's a base, it's basically looking at information that we can put on a map to show. How, how Monroe is growing, you know, what its demographics are, transportation, land use. So. Base mapping is really just looking at kind of the existing condition. And that, that helps us when we get into scenario planning or recommendations, where are we starting from? But also, you know. What are those potential impacts? If you're looking at specific block groups or census tracts, for example, and you are looking at growth or change, what does that mean for the underlying demographics, the communities that are there? So it's just a way for us to set the tone and, you know, have an understanding of kind of what it is on the ground today.
Perfect. Thank you. If I could put his response also into practice, because we're dealing with some, some things at the state legislature right now. One of the tendencies for urban planning is to encourage higher density development at the downtown core. The downtown core also tends to be those areas where you have more affordable housing. And so you think about here in Monroe and there's the possibility for conversion of. Single family detached homes or detached residential units is what we should call them, detached residential units in our old downtown. Where people might come in and buy them and then, and then put in multi, you know, put in attached product. And the, the downside of doing that is that you end up with potential displacement effects. We had something similar happen a couple of years ago where an apartment complex over by the sewage treatment plant that was very low income. People renting there was acquired by another company and that company decided they wanted to, to update the structure. It led to the displacement of many people who barely could afford where they were. And so one of the things that the consultants might be looking at might be, hey, maybe we should be looking at those areas that we're looking at annexing. That when we annex territory, maybe that's where the attached housing product should be, because then you're not displacing an existing area. Instead, you're taking five acres with a couple of horses and one house that somebody sold to a developer and you're putting in attached housing product instead. So you don't have the displacement effect. So that would be an example, I think, that they would be talking about in addition to wetlands and, and things like that.
That is excellent. Yeah, I'm glad I asked. Thank you guys both.
Thanks. The other thing I, I wanted to ask just in terms of your scoping, I know that there's a lot of. Talk in the state legislature right now about affordable housing and housing of certain. AMIs and affordability, that kind of stuff. How, how is that going to inform the policy that, I'm sorry, the work that you've already started?
Yeah, so I can start maybe so you can jump in if I, I miss anything. So we do, we are looking at. Hospital two thousand one, I believe that's the. We will be writing, we'll be doing some analysis to be able to address that. And that's really about housing production strategy with. For different incomes. And how do your, how do your policies address that or will address that? So we do have that as a part of our scope to be able to look at that. From the comprehensive plan standpoint, it's really, that's a policy question. We aren't necessarily doing a production strategy per se, but that could be an action. As a part of, of your comprehensive plan that you would address in the near term. There is a number of, of housing bills running through the legislature right now, including middle housing and, you know, a number of pieces that, that could affect. How both comprehensive planning and zoning are implemented over the course of time. So we'll stay up to date on that. And if there are any changes that we've, Lance and, and Kate and the team, certainly look at that. But we are looking at those different structures and production as well as that disparate impact in terms of housing that the legislature is requiring. Also do some PSRC to be looked.
Thank you. So for the planning commission, also for the council, you know, scope, budget, potential impacts, schedule. That's one of the things to realize is that as we're starting this ten year update, which is required statewide with deadlines. The state legislature right now is actively talking again about changing some of the very policies that, that consultants and staff are working on and councils and. Planning commissions are working at across, on across the state. So. One of my concerns is potential bow wave in the event that something radically changes at the state. And us wanting to make certain that we can extend deadlines at the state or ask them for funding if, if there's a wild change to scope that could affect budget. Going to go planning manager. Planning manager, twiddle, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to let both the planning commission and council know that we've already provided the same information that the council received a couple of meetings ago that. Snohomish County wide planning policy H O five, which talked about housing by income category. The other thing to note at your February twenty eighth meeting, you'll actually be approving the contract. We got a grant from Department of Commerce for middle housing. So we have additional resources that are, we are definitely adding to this contract to address housing specifically. So I want you to know.
Thank you very much.
Is a, it is a big issue and you're first out of the gate of, as being kind of phase one for your comprehensive plans in the state. So we're, we're keeping track.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Walker, did you have anything else or did I just forget to turn off your mic? Well, all right. Please continue.
All right. And then as we, as we get into, and there's a lot that happens in phase two and phase three, but as we get into phase four, that's really where we start to develop the comprehensive plan. We'll have started to start working through some of the elements in phase three, like some of the facilities elements and, you know, parks, other pieces that are. Easier to take off because a lot of work has already been done for those. Phase four and phase five, there are really was we start to develop the environmental impact statements that is required as a part of state CIPA requirements, but also the comprehensive plan, all of the. New elements, updated elements, specifically your land use, your future land use map, which we expect there will be likely some updates to be able to accommodate future growth. But with that is a series of community meetings throughout that process. And that will be again, both in line or to be online and in person. To both vet the comprehensive plan as it moves through, but also those recommendations as a part of the process. So we, we try to be very deliberate. And how we, we look at the engagement to make sure that we're, we're going out at major milestones to be able to put together information and, and input. But also that we're showing progress so that we're not taking to the, the community, the same stuff over and over. We want to make sure that we're, we're bringing new information and refined information as we move, we move forward. That will include the policy framework, which is your, essentially your elements of the comprehensive plan as well as an implementation strategy. So, you know. Part of comprehensive planning is that great policy document, but what do you do with that? And so. We, we really like to formulate an implementation plan that could be, you know. By year or by term, but it could also be by priority. And so that's something we'll want to work with you on for how to organize that. Again, it's a long-term document. We're not developing a five-year, you know, capital investment plan under this, but we are looking at those strategies to be able to time over the course of the, the life of the document. And then land use code and implementation, you know, we're, as a part of this, we're not doing formal land use code amendments, but we are going to be targeting which areas we might need to address with your code. As a part of this. And then public facilities plans, as I mentioned, sewer, water, storm and transportation are a part of this. They lag a little bit behind the comprehensive plan because they need all of our scenarios and our future land use map to be able to address their capacity for, to address that growth. So. They're always a little bit behind us just because we have to develop the land use plan first before they can put the projects together to be able to meet that need. And then finally, the draft and final EIS, that's a part of this. And then finally, the draft and final EIS, that's a part of this, um, providing the Cepha documentation that goes to you as well. Um, and there is also a community process with that too for um, documentation comments and then addressing comments before the FEIS. And then again, we're with you many times over the course of this project.
Any questions? Go ahead.
All right. Uh, so I'll just touch briefly progress to date and I'll turn it over to Sue to talk about some of the engagement strategies. I mean, you can flip through these pretty quick probably. Um, we have completed an initial plans review. Um, we've completed, we're, I've completed draft regulatory audit. So what is the Growth Management Act and we uh, updated requirements? How does that relate to the existing comprehensive plan? What do we need to change? What is okay to stay? Uh, we've done the inclusive planning assessment with Sue, we'll talk more about, and then again, the baseline conditions, the planner term. Uh, it's 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 the maps, it's the existing conditions that we're we're doing. And then um, Sue will talk a bit about communications and outreach. We have an equitable engagement plan that. Will essentially set the strategy for moving forward, which is um, you know, it's a living document. Uh, which we've already heard some stuff today that we want to think about, um, but that's a way essentially to set the frame framework for moving forward. And then the project website, which is now live. All right, so plans review. Uh, we looked at Imagine Monroe, Parks and Recreation, the Open Space Plan, uh, which was just recently uh, adopted. The current housing action plan. Your twenty twenty one, the lands reports, the shoreline master program. The Economic Development Strategy, Current Economic Development Strategy, your Transportation System Plan. And your infill multifamily and mixed use design standards, and then the downtown master plan all and and. We looked at a lot. Uh, all of those have policy uh, components in them. And so we look at these just to make sure we understand what that says and then what we might need to update. Or we need to think about is in terms of a direction moving forward. So it's a number of plans. Um, some of them are new, some are a little bit old. Uh, but those are all part of your comprehensive plan in some fashion, and so we just needed to get a sense of what they are. I don't know, there's much more to report other than than we looked at them and we looked at which ones uh, we think we can pull from and which ones we need to update. Uh, next slide. Uh, we also did a regulatory audit and I said, this is, this is primarily an internal audit for the for the staff and the consultant team to identify. Where there are changes from the Growth Management Act that apply to your existing comprehensive plan. And potentially your development regulations. Um, and what we found is that you're you're in pretty good shape. Um, there have been some changes. Uh, you did a. Full update in twenty fifteen, so that capture a lot of that. There's some new equity requirements, there's new greenhouse gas emission requirements, there's some other pieces that we'll have to update. Uh, but for the most part, we're working with a solid base doc. And so we do have some things we need to work on, but um, for the most part, we're in pretty good shape. This isn't like, so we've seen some other plans, which is just kind of. Start from scratch, you have a really good base to move from.
Before you move off of that, I'm gonna thank the planning commissioners that were here at the time. And the council members that were here at the time uh, for the work you did. Remember, we did a complete rewrite. Of the development regulations and everything, and so. That that's good, good job. You're you're hearing this like year years later, but I just want to point, good job. Okay.
Yeah, it was, it's it's kind of nice to be honest. It was, it was great to see, you know, really solid work and things that we, it's easy to build on. All right, so I want to change gears a little bit. Uh, I would do want to talk about scenario planning and what that means. So we use a proprietary tool, um, for scenario planning called Urban Footprint. Um, it's it's uh, web-based. It has a a large number of data sets already built within it that we start to pull from, and then we also augment with your existing land use and transportation. And other data sets. And it's a way for us to quickly test different assumptions uh, that we either hear from the community or you as we get into that question of how we address growth. Uh, this is actually a data set that's an urban footprint that's just existing land use. So this is not a zoning map. Just want to clarify, that's not your zoning map, but that is a map that shows. You know, kind of how growth is occurring within your zoning. And so there's a lot of great resources that we can pull out of this. And then we always backcheck it. So we always go back in and look to make sure things are consistent. And we actually found a couple of things within this that we've adjusted to uh, meet with uh, what your existing development is. But so we use this as a way to, as a tool, um, as a way to test different scenarios. It's also something that we use. Because we can export this out into GIS. Uh, we can provide Jaka and his team on the public facility side, any information they need from the ba- basin, for example, for stormwater. Um, or for TASs for transportation, it's a way to quickly be able to export that out. For the rest of the team members to use, because everybody uses slightly different geographies, so we can, we can use this tool to um. Kind of do double duty um, in terms of scenarios and outputs. So I'll just show you briefly, you know, kind of a nutshell, how this works.
Before you pull off that map, um, I'm noticing that what appears to be the city limits and I'm not able to zoom in with my eyeballs. It looks like the woodlands is not showing as within city limits, so. I just want to make certain that we're using the right baseline. Map for the city, for what's in city limits, if if I'm reading that correctly.
Those are eagle eyes and I that is great, so we.
Okay.
Yes, we, that that's part of the check is we've we've established this and we still need to work through with Lance and and Kate. To make sure that everything is is there, and that's one reason why we're not showing any progress yet on this. This is just starting to pull information in. Okay, thank you for that. We'll make sure that's that's there for the next one.
Thanks.
All right, next slide. So typically how this works, um, that this is the same, you know, general city limits that you have. We have the twenty twenty one buildable lands inventory already uploaded into this, so this is from Snohomish County. Uh, and what you'll start to see is that there are, there isn't actually a lot of vacant land within within the city, and so that's. That's important for us to know because you know, how do we start to address growth and that? One of the powerful ways of this tool to be able to do that is we can essentially paint different types of land uses, so you know. You, we can ask a series of what-if questions without af- actually having to go in and create a final map. Um, and when we do this, for example, we just started playing with the the table or the map on the right, using that ta- that. Field in the middle, you know, what if we start to make this mixed use, or what if we made it, you know, R fifteen to R thirty-four? You know, those are all the questions that you can start to answer with scenario planning. Um, very quickly by just painting a parcel or painting half a dozen parcels. Um, it's a nice way to be able to kind of check to see um, how you're meeting your targets, but also it does apply. When you change those, it'll say what your population or your employment change will be from your base, so it's 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 a good, nice way to be able to do that. Without spending a lot of time like we used to do, where we draw maps and have to put an expel Excel spreadsheet together. And then, you know, you'd lose that translation between the map and the table, so it's a nice way to integrate that. Next slide. Um, and we can get pretty specific. Uh, I just pulled this up to show ways we can actually get really into the weeds on some of this, so. Like, for example, and we're not suggesting this, I'm just showing this as an example. Those blue highlighted parcels, we just grabbed some parcels. We can actually take that that scenario canvas tool that you see on the left side. And we can again ask those series of what ifs, so that's single family right now. It's like, what if we made that, you know, middle housing? What if you allowed quads or fourplex or you wanted to go townhouse, you know, for something like that? Um, again, it's just a series of ways to be able to address that. So ultimately, what you get out of this is a final product. Um, our final product will be a GIS geo database. That will be your final land use map. Um, but this is a way to start to build that and and test as we move move forward. So there'll be a lot more on this as we come into it, but I just want to show you some ways that we use this and kind of how it's built. Um, we have incorporated all of your zoning requirements, so this addresses parking, landscaping, all of those pieces. So when you see a parcel that is acre wide, we know. The program knows it's not an acre development, it knows that you have one perth, you know. Three spaces per thousand square foot for a commercial or whatever those may be, or that you have fifteen percent landscaping, it's already built into the system, so it actually provides. You know, there, there, it's a model, but fairly specific types of results.
That's cool. Any questions? Much better than the crayon method that I used to use.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Do we have access to this tool or is this just? It seems fun.
Yeah, it's it's a great tool and it's used, it's called Urban Footprint and it was developed, there's a number of scenario planning tools out there that we've used over time. Um, we found that this one is nice because it has a lot of data already built into it, like uh, demographics, all of the census data is automatically updated. It has that base level existing land use, which again, you know, we always try to factor that as much as possible to make sure that it's accurate. Um, I do want to stress it's a tool. Um, it's not a. One hundred percent final product, but it's a way to help you make decisions. And so I expect we'll be able to use this, um, you know, in sessions or, you know, through work groups as needed.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. All right, and again, there's some different inputs that I was saying, this is your zoning actually within Urban Footprint, you can start to see, you know. For this particular place type, kind of how it's applied, FAR, floor area ratio, parking requirements. Landscaping, where the building, building is, different types of things. So we we put these in as as best we can. To mimic what your your existing development would be, and then we change them if we need to 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 forget what the new new zones or land use classifications. Next one. All right, so I'm gonna switch over to.
Thanks Alex. Um, so as another thing that we did, uh, just to understand the lay of the land. And provide us with kind of a roadmap for how to move forward, because this is a multi. Year plan and it's going to take a lot of work. Um, we did an inclusive community assessment. Um, it is required by the state to look at uh, through the Department of Commerce. As well as Puget Sound Regional um, Growth Council through their Vision twenty fifty plan, which is their regulatory like guiding document. Um, that requires all cities to look at their policies and goals. To address any inequitable outcomes as they refer specifically um, through PSRC housing. Um, but we know that comprehensive plans and uh, land use and everything that makes the city work. Doesn't just sit within one element, but it's the entire thing. So we're looking at transportation, we're looking at. Um, natural resources, at housing and at land use. Um, so through this community or inclusive community assessment, we are able to understand. Where uh, the city of Monroe is currently at. Um, there's a little bit of uh, you know, people wonder why we look at the comprehensive plan. Because ultimately with this update, we're going to be doing a new, right? Um, but if you're thinking about the comprehensive plan as the overarching umbrella. That has policies that will then guide the decisions that a city makes. Um, it gives us insight into how those are, where we stand around um, equity issues and inclusive planning. Um, so we had a really great start. We had the Imagine Monroe. Um, process and then the aspirational vision statement. Which we did use um, as we went through this exercise as the metric. For um, understanding if or asking ourselves if the goal and policy. Um, what the equitable outcome uh, was for that goal and policy. So there were a set of five questions that we asked. Um, are all of the subgroups of the community represented? Um, does the policy or goal provide uh, and background information, provide contextual information? On how or if outcomes are shared by everyone? Uh, does the policy or goal have the potential to disproportionately impact the community? Uh, does it contain offensive or exclusionary language? And does it make assumptions about a person's upbringing, economic status or education? And um, the reason why we looked at these three questions is because again, this being a roadmap for us. We wanted to understand if there were any um. Quantitative or I'm sorry qualitative items that we needed to check with the community. Uh, the data tells one story, but is the data really representative of what's going on um, in the community? So having that baseline gives us um, a place to start with the questions that we ask with the exercises that. Uh, we'll include in the public engagement process. It also helps us define performance measures. Uh, that will eventually be built into the implementation plan and the action plan. And then you're not just having a policy, but you're able to measure. Um, the outcomes of those policy after it it's been implemented. Um, and then finally. Um, the third reason um, was to start to kind of create a structure for um, interdepartmental um, collaboration. Because again, speaking to the fact that um, the way that. This is progressing is that it's not just, you know, planning that's looking at land use. It's not just public works, that's looking at transportation, but all of it is connected each other. Um, before, we, I do have an example of uh, what this assessment looks like of the matrix, but before I move on to that, does anybody?
It's good. Anybody have any questions or comments on what you're looking at there? All right, let's go ahead and go on to the example. Thank you.
So um, we went through this process of looking at each one of the policies that were included. In uh, the comprehensive plan. Uh, there were a lot. Um, and it was very comprehensive. Uh, there were three levels of uh, we assigned a outcome category. To each of those policies. If it was green, it meant that it advanced um, in inclusion in the community and it met the. Um, Imagine Monroe aspirational vision. If it was yellow, it meant that. It meets the um, Imagine Monroe aspirational vision and the requirements of. Um, the comprehensive plan update, but it does have the potential. Um, depending on the interpretation, the implementation, the action following the policy. Um, and then finally, if it was orange, it meant that it had the potential to uh, perpetuate some type of harm. To a historically underrepresented um, group. Um, these are again, just very meant to be high level, they're not a, you know, you did this wrong, you did that wrong or. It it really just gave us a point to start. Um, an example that I want to pull out here is this uh, one hundred and seventy-two policy. Uh, to identify, preserve and protect historic, cultural and archaeological resources. That's a great policy. Um, but what was missing was really a definition on whose history, whose culture. Um, we can. It's it's assumed and I'm sure, I I know it is, uh, we're talking about the indigenous cultural and archaeological resources. But without that definition, if you're just picking this up, depending on if you're new to the city. Um, or if you are just a resident, it could be interpreted into in a way. Um, that is offensive or that doesn't, um, it doesn't meet the intention, the good intention of policy. Um, so that's why it's here listed as uh, orange. Um, and again. It just, this is, gives us that roadmap of where we, you know, maybe need to have clearer language. We need to establish a definition. Um, and then the rest of this uh, the grid here on the right-hand side. Uh, we wanted to. We wanted to show and to understand what the intersections were between this policy and all of the other. Um, departments would be using this document, so uh, we wanted to pretty lay out very clearly. That it wasn't just, you know, a housing um, policy, but it did involve, you know, uh, land use or economic development. Or facilities and utilities. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I think, you know, just just want to stress, you know, many of these are. As we step step through this, it's it's a roadmap for us to look at language. And and what that means from, you know, multiple perspectives. And so when it, when it's orange, as Sue said, it doesn't mean that it's bad, it just means that maybe that policy needs to be clarified. About what it's really, what it's really saying, or maybe it needs to be two policies. And so it helps us and it'll help you as we start to step through that language for that policy framework. And also I think conversations with the community about, you know, words are very powerful and important. And, you know, we need to be thinking about what that means as we think about a citywide, citywide document.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments on on that? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so I wanted to spend a little bit of time to talk about the public engagement plan. Um. I will emphasize again what Alex said earlier, this is a living document for us, so we want to lay it out as a guide. Um, there are going to be uh, principles there uh, based off of the Imagine Row. Um, aspirational vision and that process as well as. A principles that we have used in the past that we know uh, work around equitable engagement. Um, we want to set goals for ourselves, uh, so. The idea is that as we move through the process, we can come back to uh, this plan, then ultimately check ourselves. Are there people uh, missing from the conversation that we haven't touched? Um, are um, is there an underrepresentation or an overrepresentation of um, a key audience? Um, and who are they and making sure that they stay uh, uh, at the forefront? Um, through our conversations today, uh, we actually got some really great, um, uh, recommendations for how to reach the Hispanic and Latino, uh, community. And, uh, we're hoping to explore other options to, um, not just engage the Hispanic and Latino community, but the Ukrainian community, um, to, to underserved, um, or, you know, low income folks. And there was another demographic group that.
Um, students, but also, uh, s- students whose parents may not speak English, which is very specific.
Um, and the engagement plan does lay out kind of guidelines for, um, you know, when we would translate, when we would have in, in a language, a facilitation for, uh, the engagement activities as well.
Go ahead.
Um, so just to make sure that this plan is the community's plan and it is not our plan, um, we want to embed it, um, engagement throughout the entire process. So the way that I, I look at this is, um, throughout the process, we really are doing these four things. You're preparing, um, the community for what's to come. You're informing them. Um, my favorite part is you're consulting and ball, involving and collaborating. And then finally, really empowering them to, um, have their voice heard and to challenge us and staff if we miss something, right? Being able to just come back and, um, let us know that the recommendations or the policies, uh, could be strengthened. But having establishing from the very beginning, those engagement opportunities, um, really allow folks to, um, not only does it encourage transparency, but I think in the end, we want that ownership over this plan to be yours and the community.
All right, so, uh, we just want to show you briefly the, the project website and we'll show you the web map as well too. Um, we should.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead. I missed your light going on.
Thank you. I had a question if you could, yeah, perfect. Um, under, I believe the inform where it says communications and media rollout, could you explain a little bit more about that? Do you have plans to communicate this to like, say the Everett Herald, Seattle Times? I'm just curious what you've got planned for that. Thank you.
I'll start and Alex, if you want to add, um, we, we can explore, uh, and, and local newspapers and, and, and media outlets are actually a really great way to get the word out. As we do, again, want, um, a high number of participation and, uh, representative participation across the board. Um, there is a part of this as social media campaign as well that will be included in that. Um, like, thinking about this as a living document, uh, we haven't talked about frequency yet, uh, in specific touchpoints, but, um, typically historically, wouldn't we've done this? It's always been at key milestones. And, um, it enough time ahead of large community event for folks to plan on attending.
Well, I was just curious in terms of when you say media, to me that indicates press. Um, it's kind of an antiquated term now because it's all media, but just, you know, do, is the city going to have a presence in newspaper, um, online? You know, the Herald is now digital on Mondays and they both combine their weekend. Just curious about that type of coverage.
Uh, yes, we will have, uh, we, we typically like, we'll do the typical posts, you know, in, in newspapers. Uh, we do a fair bit of social media and we also try to get crossposts, uh, for, you know, city partners and others. The, the city social media accounts only go so far typically. And so we'll, we'll look to community partners to crosspost to their, um, contacts as well too. Um, that's partly why we do these initial outreach events or these interviews is to broaden that, that, that list of people that can get the word out. Um, for Monroe, we'll do it both in English and Spanish, um, as well. And so that way we can hopefully get, you know, gather input from, from a, a number of different, uh, perspectives. So there's, you, you, you're, you never reach everybody, but we try to reach as many people as possible, um, using both traditional and, and informal, uh, networks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm only, only going to mention this because there's another newspaper in the area, just in case it hasn't made your list, is the Snohomish Tribune. Uh, they're, they're out of Snohomish. So we used to have a Monroe monitor, but we don't, that's gone away. So. Any other, uh, questions, comments from folks? Melanie and, and Ed, do you, do you have any? Commissioner Lockhart and, uh, Councilmember Davis, um, you still with us? Just a thumbs up works unless you've got a question. Perfect. Okay. I, I want to make certain you feel like you're part of us. Sounds good. All right. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to the next one.
All right. So, so we're going to attempt to share the website with you. So give us just a moment here. We'll switch. All right, see if I can, see if I can drive. All right. So we, we do have a project website that's live now. Um, this is linked off the city's, the city's website. Uh, we're using Monroe twenty, what twenty forty-four dot com. Uh, we felt that was appropriate and easy to remember, uh, for folks. Uh, we didn't want to have too many backslashes and other types of things there. Monroe twenty forty-four dot com seemed great. Uh, there's not a ton on here, but this will become the project repository for all of the information. Once we're, um, through with this meeting, we'll put the, this presentation on there. Um, as well as the equitable engagement plan, which we've, we've updated, uh, based on city comments. And so this will be a, become a place where people can go to grab the schedule or meetings are posted, um, any information for project updates. Uh, it'll also have all of the documents. So as we produce documents, we'll start to post those within that documents folder. Um, and we've tried to make it pretty straightforward to navigate. Um, you know, you can go into the plan and actually see the existing comprehensive plan if you want. Um, but again, the schedule, I want to go down here though and see if it'll take me there. Let's see. Just. Oh, there we go. Um, so the project document is the cop plan, but I wanted to share the project web map. And so this is accessible to everybody. Let's load up. Oh. There we go. All right. Uh, so the project web map, I encourage you to explore this. Um, this has demographic and land use data. Um, this one is showing, um, non-hispanic, white alone population. So these are out of the most recent census data. Uh, and so there's different ways that you can explore this. So you can click on parcels, click off parcels. There's a number of different things that you can start to add in. So it's a way just to kind of play to see where things are at. And one way we, we wanted to set this up is to be able to overlay data. Um, for example, median household value with household income. Um, you know, other different ways that you could start to layer data. So like, for example, this is single-family housing units, you know, based on the percentage of housing type. And if you were interested in also adding housing income on top of, or in that. Should it show? There we go. Uh, you can also overlay that with different, different layers. So it's a way to start layering data and you can use the transparencies to be able to clear in and clear out, you know, kind of what you want to show. As you're typing these in though, you can also start to see different, um, uh, info graphics, like this is land use and different types of, of the, the percentage of housing. So here you can see that most of your, um, development or existing land use of almost half the, the single family. Um, and as we start to develop scenarios, we'll update that for what some of these scenarios might look like. But it's just different information that we have here that people may be interested in seeing for how the city works. Um, you can't break this. So, you know, this is, so no matter how many times you click or unclick, uh, this is all within our, our online geo database. Uh, so we felt it was, it was important just to kind of show from a transparency standpoint, what types of information is out there. Well, as I said, we'll update this as we get new information, but, um, but I encourage you to take a look. And what I find really interesting with this is again, to be able to layer some of those different data elements, um, particularly some of the demographics and housing or, um, demographics and environmental categories. Cause you, you do see, you know, Monroe Highway, Highway two, um, is a dividing line in many ways. And what's one thing we saw in these maps very clearly is that, you know, there are very different demographics depending on what side of the road you're on. And that has implications for how we think about land use growth over time.
Thank you. So I just wanted to interrupt you really quick. Commissioner Lockhart, go ahead.
Um, yeah, this one thing, this map is amazing. I'm really excited to go play around with it. But, um, one of the things that's on the front page, it was just something that I saw that I can't unsee. Um, but at the bottom underneath like the tabs, um, it says image Monroe instead of imagine Monroe. So it's like, it's just a little typo at the bottom of, it was the first page you were on. Um.
Talk about eagle eyes.
I, I just happened to see it and once I see it, I can't unsee it. So, um, I, this doesn't look like the page it was. It, it, I think it's where you clicked to get to the map, whatever, that one. And then under, so the first at top says image Monroe.
Thank you very much for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lockhart gets a gold star tonight. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Uh, so that, but yeah, so I think I, I didn't have much else to say on the web map other than I encourage you to explore it. I think it's, it's, it's going to be a great tool. Um, again, the website is still, there's not a lot on it now, but over the next, you know, month or so, we'll start to get a lot more information in there. And, um, as we use it for publication, uh, counselor, you're asking about some media, other pieces. This will become a key piece, uh, for this as well. And so it's a nice space for the project and a easy, an easy place to go gather information.
Any, uh, questions or comments from commissioners or councilmembers? All right.
Oh, with that, just want to appreciate the time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Director Bailey.
I just wanted to say that, um, if, when you get questions from, from folks about, uh, comp plan and they're looking for documents, this would be a good place to send you. So, so just so you know, like when you go to the, to the website, the easiest way to find it is if you go down to the bottom and you, there's a general category for land use. Um, and it'll take you to the community development page and there's, there's a link on the very left-hand side for the cop plan. Um, cop plan twenty forty-four, cause there's also the, the current complaint. So it's, it's a couple clicks to get there, but, um, when, if, if somebody is asking questions, this would be a good place to, to send them because we're going to, we're going to have everything updated on here. So that's a good place to start.
Director Bailey, would somebody be able to go into the URL, URL line and just type in Monroe twenty forty-four dot com and have it come up? Okay.
We'll double check that one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Cool.
Yes, it does.
Cool. All right. Uh, any other questions or comments? And then I know that we have a couple of questions, right?
We'll share those and just.
All right, go ahead.
All right. So, um, we have just a couple of questions for you. And again, these are, we're not, we're not going to hold you to these. Uh, but we wanted you to start thinking about things that we've been thinking about and what we've talked to, you know, a number of folks today about. First, first question, what do you think are the biggest challenges and opportunity facing Monroe in the next twenty years? You know, again, the comprehensive plan is a long-range planning document. Um, certainly, you know, current issues, opportunities and challenges, but when you look out twenty years and as Mayor mentioned, your kids look out twenty years, um, I know they're not thinking that far ahead yet, but, uh, what it, what, what are those things that we should be thinking about as a project team moving forward for this?
So we're just going to go around. I'm going to start off because Councilmember Scarborough put up his hand. Councilmember Scarborough, can you go ahead and hit your, uh, light real quick so I can get your mic? Good. Go ahead.
Let's say egress and exfil from town. Getting into Highway two, getting into two oh three, uh, getting five twenty-two. There's only so many arteries from the north end of town into downtown and conversely on to two, five twenty-two and two oh three. I think it's going to be a big issue. Uh, there's certainly others, but I'll let somebody else come up with one.
Again, what I'm going to do is I'm going to bounce between planning commission and council. So I'm going to go to, uh, Commissioner Dawkins next. Commissioner Dawkins. Thank you. And I appreciate you hitting your lights. It's easier for me to find your mics. Go ahead.
I was also going to say traffic, but then also jobs. So traffic's a huge one already, I think. And if we're adding more people to this town, which we are, then I don't know, we need to do something with it right away.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, hit your light, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
You guys have great answers, uh, which I agree with all of them. Um, I'm going to go with loss of green space, um, as we start to infill.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, we get, again, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I would have to agree with, um, Kelsey. Um, I feel like the population is increasing, but I don't really feel like Monroe could, can handle that. Um, because I see a lot of times people do complain about the traffic. They complain about like the affordable housing that's coming. And it's just like, I mean, I, they're coming, they're coming, we're growing. And so my biggest concern is that the community is not going to be able to deal with that in a productive, warm way. And that's really a concern of mine.
So would that be public acceptance?
We could say that. We could say that, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would say affordable housing with the just the challenge. Trying to think, I think most of us with kids are like, have no clue how our kids will afford a home anywhere near this area. And so trying to think creatively to not just infill Monroe, uh, but also make it affordable. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair Bull. Ah, your Councilmember Davis this evening. Go ahead, Chair Bull.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, well, to not be redundant, I, I'm thinking of two things. I'm thinking, you know, identity, making sure we are focused on having an identity, um, and stick into that identity, uh, because we are a small town and I think, you know, a lot of people think, you know, I don't want more people here, but we're not growing that fast. We have to, like you said, we just have to talk to them, educate them, make them understand that we're mandated to have a certain amount of growth. Um, and, you know, compared to the cities that are along the light rail line, you know, we're growing at a, at a miniscule rate, right? I work in Lindley. The number of, um, additional people, the influx of apartments that are going in there right along where the light rail station is, um, it, it blows your mind. Here it's not that way. It, it, you know, it's, it just doesn't seem like we're growing that fast. It's just people's perception. So if we can get them over that, understand that growth isn't bad as long as it's well thought out, planned for. And, you know, get them to welcome, you know, residents because, um, I think it's just an education thing, but along those same lines, talking about the light rail line, we're sort of on our own. You know what I mean? We're not getting the resources that everybody along the I-five corridor is getting. And so I think that's the challenge for the next twenty years is all those communities are getting money for, to accommodate the growth. And we're, I don't, you know, we're begging for five twenty-two to be widened for the last twenty years, right? There, there's just not enough attention and resources funneled this direction. So those are my two thoughts.
Thank you, Chair. Um, then we go over to Councilmember Kenny.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I think design standards are really important so that we have, um, development that is attractive, uh, cohesive, and we're preserving some of our historic structures. I think, what is our character? Who are we? How do we want to look? You know, we often are compared to Snohomish and Snohomish has that downtown character. Um, new buildings look like old buildings and it makes people want to come visit and spend time there because it's a beautiful city. They have a great downtown. We could have that too. We already have a very nice looking city, but I think design standards are important so that as we develop new properties, um, we're not tearing everything down. We're looking at how can we make our downtown corridor look good? And that extends to new building for residential as well. I think we just need to be mindful and thoughtful about it. And, uh, we're always trying to get more people to come visit and spend money here. And I think if we have a cohesive, um, design standards, I think that will help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll acknowledge that Councilmember Kenny, that what you just said there can sometimes address what Commissioner Lewis brought up, which is community acceptance. That if you've got a series of big box buildings going in that are five stories tall next to one story buildings that that sort of thing can that can cause what people perceive to be issues with growth, which Chair Bull was talking about as well. So thank you. Um, and then we go to Commissioner Blair. Oh, that's Heather. And you're fifteen.
There we go.
Your seat fifteen, okay.
For a challenge, I feel like it's something that some others have hit on, but I'll coin it as keeping the community spirit that we have. Uh, we have a close knit, kind community and to, I know people want to keep this uh, while also expanding. So I think that's what uh, we are challenged with possibly losing if we don't recognize uh, that and possibly um, have an opportunity to plan uh, to keep it by having gathering spaces, green spaces. Um, ways for people to actually uh, do activities together and enjoy each other's company. Would be some planned spaces for that, which would keep people back together. Because um, not only just COVID, but just the growth that we've experienced, even though it's not huge, it has made an impact. Another thing I'd like to say as a challenge is how do we, how do we make the city better for the people that are already here? How can they find more enjoyment um, with what we have? Such as more parks.
Thank you, Commissioner Blair. Councilmember Foulter.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of um, great notes already, especially our last few commissioners there. It's been, um, I think that because I am a downtown person, as some are some of you, um, I feel like we already have that ability to um, say this is our community type of thing. And in that, I find that we are actually very welcoming to our newcomers. So um, I think that um, keeping that feel of, you know, when you're talking about the design standards, yeah, we really need to um, upgrade those a bit. Because um, that helps to um, feel like, hey, we got more people in here. That's exciting. Instead of what is that big blob next to us? Um, and because we are um, doing that as well, the balance of parks, I think that's a great point, Brandy, that, you know, having that, those community spaces, that's really good. Um, and we are privileged to be the seat of, well, the interchange of three different highways. So of course we're going to have um, traffic and so we might as well make it look good as we go through. I don't know. I mean, if you're stuck looking at someone's house, yes, um, obviously, traffic needs to be addressed. And the more people we can get to work in town, the less traffic we are gonna have um, as a problem. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Councilmember. If you could hit your plate, there you go.
Who am I tonight, by the way?
Uh, you, you are Councilmember Gamble this evening.
Awesome.
So uh,
go ahead.
Commissioner Walker, go ahead.
I, I think by far, housing is, is the most important. Um, obviously, uh, Commissioner Bull mentioned it, but I honestly feel like we're almost tapped out with buildable lands from what I know. Even with the, the land that's still available for us to annex, I guess, not including East Monroe. Um, but the, the basis of real estate obviously is scarcity and Monroe is, is uh, already getting limited on housing. So uh, as Councilman Hanford referenced, I mean, young people have no opportunity to buy a house um, here. And, and I don't think that's gonna change, obviously, in twenty forty-four, the sprawl is going to continue from the east side. Um, and so housing prices are just gonna keep, keep going up Monroe and you're gonna see our personality kind of bleed off from that as uh, those prices continue to rise. Um, so I, I would beg that we start planning for, for housing now, especially considering how long uh, projects that involve density, even multifamily housing take to come to fruition. Um, if we continue to drag our feet on it, again, we're gonna, we're gonna remain solely focused on single family and I love single family, but uh, there, there's gotta be a balance um, between the two multifamily and, and density and single housing or single family opportunity. Uh, love what uh, Councilwoman Kenny and Foulter said. So many opportunities for beautifications around the city. Uh, and I think that that'll go really well with the idea of uh, better defining our, our personality. Because we can, we can say we're a million things. We can say we're the River Town, the um, Old Main Street and all that. But uh, once we can get kind of a uniform look throughout the town, beautify some areas. There's a few different projects that are uh, kind of in concept right now uh, around town with telephone lines. And uh, there's, there's just a lot of ways, when you drive through Monroe on highway two and you kind of look around, at least on highway two, there's, there's not much to, to write home about, honestly, with Fred Meyer, you've got a few businesses over here, you've got a motel, gas stations, boom, you're through Monroe. So uh, whether that's design standards or, or initiatives on beautifications. Um, I, I would love to see that become a big part of the comprehensive plan. And yeah, I'm sorry for talking so much. It's all good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Councilmember Hanford, I do see that you've got your light on, like to hit the two offline folks first. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Davis. Go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Um, yeah, lots of uh, uh, good responses there and I think people have a pretty good idea of some of the issues that we many issues, if you will, that we do have to deal with. I'm gonna deal with, or I'm just gonna speak on two more practical things. They've been there for a long time and they're not going anywhere and they're gonna be a problem in the future as they have been in the past. You've got US Highway two running through town and parallel with them is uh, Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Now neither, though those two entities are gonna go anywhere or change, they're gonna always be there. And uh, both of those uh, provide unique issues in getting across uh, both the highway and the railroad. Um, they both lend their unique uh, uh, problems to the, the city. It divides the city right in half and it's always been a problem in whatever, however we plan or whatever we're gonna plan with or on or try and do, that's always gonna be an issue for us and something that's always going to um, create some creative thinking. Uh, the other thing is that the fact that there's only limited uh, area for the city of Monroe are, we only have so much buildable property left. Uh, you know, twenty years ago, the industrial park seemed like a, a big wide open place, but it's not so much anymore. It's a, it's getting filled and uh, not a whole lot of opportunities there. Uh, new housing, things like that. Um, we're, we're, we're getting to uh, pretty close to a max. Fill there and, and that's going to create uh, uh, unique issues as we look for affordable housing. Ideas in the city and in increased growth uh, in the future. So I think those two things are, are all, they've been with us for a very long time and I think um, they're gonna be with us uh, for a lot longer and, and uh, they're, they're unique and they cause uh, some unique issues, but uh, I think that's uh, those two things are always gonna be there to deal with. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna go now to Commissioner, Commissioner Lockhart, Commissioner Lockhart, go ahead.
Yeah, um, mostly, I mean, my top ones would be uh, most echoing what Commissioners Blair and Walker said, I think in terms of um, just utilizing green space and parks and everything for our kids and our families. And then also housing, I think we're gonna continue to see just more um, multi-general rational um, housing going on over the years. Um, and you know, my family as an example, we, we purchased when we had two kids, then we ended up with three kids and they're growing fast. And if they end up in the house, you know, past, past early adulthood, then I, I just see that we're gonna quickly outgrow where we're at. So just looking at um, creative ways to um, helps families to stay here that uh, maybe in those unique positions. Um, but then something that I, um, that hasn't been mentioned that I figured I'd bring up too is, um, you know, this uh, late summer, we, we saw the, the wildfires that got really close to us and how that impacted our air quality for a pretty extended period of time. And um, I just, I, I fear that we're gonna see more and more of that as the years go on. And so just also making sure that Monroe is prepared, not only for, if there's those natural disasters that happen like super close to us. Um, because we saw that the fire crews all addressed that really well. Um, and so everybody utilized and the fairgrounds were used for that. So I, I think that Monroe has the capability to um, respond to things well, but like with the air quality and, and, and things like that. Just um, keeping those in mind as we move forward to that those, I think those situations are going to be um, more frequent as the, as the years progress, rather than just being kind of a once in a lifetime type of thing.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and um, answer the question also. Um, I appreciate everything that everybody has shared. I don't disagree with anything that I've heard for myself. Um, I feel that, that Commissioner Walker brought up something that is um, close to a concern that I have. And that is the continuing sprawl that we're getting uh, along the I five and four oh five corridor is a concern to me. Uh, the potential expansion of that sprawl into the um, discount, the non-contiguous UGA areas. Um, and what I'm thinking about there in particular is the potential expansion of the county UGAs um, that are unincorporated uh, along state route nine. And also the potential uh, increase in residential and other development in the multi-UGA area. And the reason why these things are important is that when people are looking to start a new business, when people are looking to um, to find a place to locate. If the county is allowing urban level development to occur in unincorporated areas closer to the I five corridor, they're gonna choose not to locate in cities like Monroe and Snohomish. In essence, they're taking away opportunities from us to grow and to have urban and uh, you know, have, have more urban level development and to have more choices in retail and more choices in restaurants and all those things that I hear people talk about that they want here, like a Trader Joe's or a PCC. They're maintaining the population closer to I five and when they want single, when they want not single family, I don't know that I should be using that term. Maybe it's detached residential development. When they want detached residential development, they are just continuing the sprawl into unincorporated areas. And I have a real concern for the city of Monroe, the city of Snohomish and cities like us, that counties are trying to become cities. And they should be regional service providers. They don't have mayors, they don't have councils, they don't have police forces the way that we do with three officers on duty and roughly, what, six square miles? Instead, they've got one law enforcement officer for every ten square miles or something like that. We're providing urban services to um, to uh, to schools in our school district and outside city limits faster than the sheriff does. So one of the concerns I have is that we have, we have the county allowing detached residential development in uh, outside of city limits, including within our UGA. And, and they shouldn't be allowed to do that. Those areas should be annexed into our territory. And then we should really look at increasing the zoning, the density on those to help bring in affordable housing. And so when you talk about an opportunity, an opportunity is my family chose to live here because we liked the parks. I've heard this open space. I love the fact that I can go for a walk around Lake Tye and see cows. I can see cows. I'm in an urban area, but I see cows. I like that, you know? I like being surrounded by, by hills and trees and things like that, but I still live in a community that is more urban. I still have a mayor and I still have a council and a planning commission that might live right next door around the corner from me. You don't get that when you're in unincorporated Snohomish County, living in a city that is represented by one council member, by one executive, by uh, by one sheriff that's elected by the entire county. They don't represent you the same way. And so that's one thing that concerns me and one of the reasons why we've been commenting on the Snohomish County um, planning documents, telling them that no, urban growth belongs within city limits. So that's one concern that I have. Um, the other thing, uh, and I think it was Commissioner Blair, no, Commissioner Blair, you might have said it too, but uh, you brought it up. We, we have all that detached residential, all that detached residential development on the north side of highway two. Um, maybe Commissioner Walker also brought this up. Tony Balk was right. Councilmember Balk was right. We should have allowed for higher density residential development on the north side of highway two also. So as we're looking at our land use plans, I think we have an opportunity to look at a more diverse approach to our development in town. To make certain that you have detached residential, but you also have the ability to have attached residential in the same neighborhood. You know, um, as was brought up by a couple of you, our, our buildable lands, we're, we're running out of land to put things. And so the only thing that we have to get more affordable housing is displacement of people in lower cost housing. And wouldn't it be great that we could annex territory with one house, some horses on it, that's five acres without the county allowing redevelopment of it into detached? And then expect us to bring it in at million dollar homes when we could bring it in with the horse and a house and have it be attached housing product. You know, you don't have the displacement, the horses will find somewhere to go, you know? So um, the horses can go to the county where horses should be. So you know, that, that would be some things that, that, that I see as opportunity, but also challenge. Cities should be cities, counties should be rural and should be counties. And um, anyway, those are some thoughts from me. Um, Councilmember Hanford, uh, you had your hand up and then we have two more questions, I think. Go ahead, Councilmember. Oh, one more question. Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Commissioner Blair brought it up. I, I forgot to bring up an opportunity when it was my turn, but uh, we do have a kind community and that was well put. And in, in my experience working at Boeing, both in Everett and in Renton with lots of different employees. The, the good things that I hear about Monroe from their perspective, from someone outside of the city. That's a big opportunity and we do have the fairgrounds and the fair that's an annual thing. And so I think like Commissioner Walker talked about beautifying and helping to present a good um, good impression along highway two, I, I think we have a great opportunity uh, in working with the fairgrounds. Already we were working on the walkway.
Which is great, yeah.
So uh, I just wanted to bring those up. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, go ahead, Commissioner Walker. Councilmember Gamble, Walker.
There was something I was trying to think of with opportunities earlier and I, I remembered it, it's the, the North Kelsey Land and I, I have always talked about it. It's such a, uh, it feels like one of the last opportunities Monroe has with a big patch of land to do something character defining. Um, and I, I feel like we, I feel like we missed an opportunity with that. There's a, a corner lot uh, north of Lake Tye that, that is a, a building, a warehouse now for light industrial. With that in mind, I'm thinking any piece of raw land that we still have, I, I would love if we could be more um, creative. I, I understand that uh, that's easier said than done and you're waiting for a developer to come in and make that decision. Um, but uh, I guess just yeah, thinking outside of the box or, or incorporating that opportunity with that raw land into the, the long-term scheme for uh, personality. I think that would, that'd be really important, so.
Commissioner Walker, you bring up a really important point. And I think that we would all do well to remember this, that the planning commission recommends visions to us. And when it comes time for your mayor to implement things or for the council to consider things that are brought forward, it's important that we remember what the vision is. They're the ones that come forward with a vision. What I just heard our councilmember, our commissioner say is that the vision that you come up with and the land that we have available, it's really important that we are, we, we do a lot to really discern whether or not something's right. And, and, and I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next question. Oh, did I turn you off? Okay, here we go.
I think I'm still on.
Oh, all right.
So I know we, um, we're running short on time, but we did. I, I did want to just to bring up, because this is something that, you know, again, we're not gonna, we're not gonna answer this question tonight, but I, I wanted to put this.
I did want to just to bring up, because this is something that, you know, again, we're not gonna, we're not gonna answer this question tonight, but I, I wanted to put this in, in front of you, so we've, we've talked a lot about, you know. I love the idea of a kind community, but also, you know, those challenges that we've talked about it, how we fit it within that context of a kind community, so. How do we address that through the comprehensive plan, you know, we are. Looking at policies and we're gonna be looking at land use and transportation, other components. But Commissioner Walker, you're talking about, you know, Kelsey, North Kelsey area, that's an excellent example of, you know, how could the comprehensive plan start to address some of those. Kind of specific challenges that we, we've talked about now and that we'll hear about from the community as well too, but also. How do we embolden, you know, folks and decision makers to really take on both that challenge as well as the opportunities that this process faces? And so it's a question, it's also a bit of a statement. And so certainly we have, we have a little bit of time to talk about that, but I wanted to put that out there just as a way to start thinking about. What this process and this plan really means for Monroe and you as decision makers moving forward through the end of. Twenty twenty-four, which is our deadline to complete this process.
Would everybody like to weigh in individually on how we should address those concerns? Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open the floor up to go ahead and put your hand up if you'd like to answer the question. How should the comprehensive plan address those concerns and opportunities? Okay, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Lewis.
Well, I already, I think that when you guys talk about. The inclusive planning assessment and the equitable engagement plan, while I don't know like the depth of them, I think that's a good start. I think that when you. Bring those voices to the table that aren't normally heard, that's an important piece. We live in a community where, you know, there, there is a lot of diversity. But unfortunately, there are those who their voices aren't heard. You know, and so I think it's important to go out into the community and hear those voices and us as. Planning Commission, as City Council, it's important for us to be able to see things through a different lens, right, like. We live life how we, we've lived life, right, and so I think it's really important for us to put on that other set. Of, you know, eyes and say, you know. Hey, I'm a family of ten, we rent our home. You know, we moved to Monroe and the only place we could find was a three-bedroom apartment. You know, and so I've lived that experience, so I'm able to. I'm able to understand why there's such a need for affordable housing. You know, and so I just think that that's a good start for, that you get out into the community and you talk to. Talk to those people who aren't normally brought to the table. Right, because we're at the table, but we need to make sure that those who don't come to the table, that they're eating too.
Other comments, so again, how should the comprehensive plan address the concerns and opportunities that have been raised here, Councilmember Scarborough? Once you hit your light, your seat one, got it, there you go.
Okay. Well, I think she said it on the head is one thing and everything else you have. Delineated along the way is going to do that by checking policies. By checking the growth. Growth, jobs, housing, affordable housing, all those things are pretty well. Spoken to in your presentations, I, I think you're well on your way to answering. That the question, the answers to this question are in what we're doing or what we're asking you to do.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Uh, yes, agree with Commissioner Lewis, I think one important thing to remember is I heard a lot of you guys reaching out. And to remember that we all need to be reaching out as well, like we're, like. They're probably pretty awesome, I'm assuming you guys are pretty awesome, the city hired you. But you're not a part of our community, we're the part of the community, so we have to make sure that we are reaching out to the people that, that haven't been heard or don't find out about these things. And make sure that we bring that back to. These meetings that we sit in and implement that and then. Move that on to me.
I'm gonna underscore what Councilmember Fisher just said. I, I think that's one thing that we forget about when we get into this room, I mean, when, I, I know I, I at least have been challenged every time I've run for office except for the last time. And I went out to three to four thousand homes. You know, I met some of you at, at some of your, your homes outdoor belling. And I think that sometimes, you know, when you're appointed, it's a little bit different, but I, I think sometimes we forget. When we get into these, into this room that we have our networks. And I encourage each of you to talk to your networks, the, the people that you know. And reach out to people that you don't know and let them know that we're working on this, I, Councilmember Fisher, perfect. You reminded me, one of the reasons why we try to look for different people to serve on Planning Commission and Parks Board and. Chisab and EDAB and everything, and we look for people that represent different parts of our community is to make certain that when something like this comes up. We, we can say, hey, you're here not just to, not just to look at paper and tell us what you think, we wanna know what. Other people think that you're in contact with. I, I really appreciate those, those comments, that's, that's really profound and I think we forget about that sometimes, thank you. Other council members or commissioners? Go ahead. I'm gonna call everybody council member in a second here, Commissioner Blair.
So the question is, how should they, and I just want to remember that the comprehensive plan. In the name, we are to be looking at all the different elements and not just focusing on, on one, and I think this joint meeting is a good example of that. We, Monroe is making a good effort for communication and everyone's voices. Being heard from the different groups and part of that is on all the different elements of the plan, not just housing.
Good point, thank you, Commissioner Walker.
Last thing, I'm sorry, I think that it is time that we start to recognize that five twenty-two. Shouldn't be planned for at least in the next decade, I don't know if it'll. Be done by the, the time I pass away, so I, with, with that being said, I, I would. Encourage. If it isn't already incorporated, I'm, I'm sure that it's probably. Probably been put into practice a few times, but. Any ways that we can just try to work with what we have in terms of the traffic situation. And those typical backups, it's gotten so much better over the last, the last few years with some of the. The mitigation. Features that have been made on the roads, but. I don't know, I, I would just say planning for traffic. Anticipating that. That the situation with the roads doesn't change.
To his point, one of the things that I've noticed is that traffic has changed since twenty twenty. And I think you've got a lot of people working hybrid and at, at home. And I would. I'm hoping that the comprehensive plan work that you're doing will somehow account for the data. About traffic, maybe about changes in business around here. I keep hearing people in Seattle, business owners in Seattle saying it's your patriotic duty to come back to work. And I keep thinking to myself, you know, I kinda like my, I kinda like our residents staying here rather than driving an hour and a half to go spend money at lunchtime at your business. I'm sorry about where things are with you, but we now have people staying here at home. You know, I, I saw my neighbor earlier today and I, I, I thought, I thought she was walking her dog, I thought, you know, I saw her dog when her dog was a puppy in twenty twenty. That's three years ago and the dog's big now. And if it hadn't been for the fact that I was working at home, I wouldn't have noticed that, you know, so whether it's me shopping during the day at home. Here, you know, to have lunch or it's seeing my neighbors in a different setting than just on the weekends. I'm wondering how much the work you're doing can kind of. Account for that, so I appreciate that, thank you. Other comments, questions? How about online? Commissioner Lockhart or Councilmember Davis? Okay. Did you have anything else? Thank you, right, thank you. Okay, so I, I guess we'll just wrap up at this, oh, good, I was gonna call you Commissioner this time, okay.
So.
Planning manager, go ahead, oh, you're me tonight.
I mean, you snare.
Yeah.
I just want to let you all know, after this evening's presentation, we will have this information again online and I will be sending you an email with the link. So again, as Lance was saying, it's on our website, but I'll also send it directly to you. And we will also be providing a copy of the engagement plan as well as the equity audit that will be going out before the end of the week.
So I'm just gonna make a couple of comments, we, we did this last time, maybe nine years ago or so and. This is an opportunity for each one of you to do something that will set the framework for the next ten years. So be bold. You know. That you're, there are gonna be other people that are gonna inherit the work that you're doing here today. And whether some of you become council members and you're implementing it or mayor and you're implementing it. Or you're still there on Planning Commission, somebody else is going to end up getting this document. And you are leaving a legacy for the future, even though it's paper. You heard somebody talk earlier today about, about the whole issue about how we treat detached versus attached product and things like that. You can see that there are real world consequences to the work you're doing and I'm asking you to be bold in your vision. And I'm asking you as few, potential future council members or mayor and you as council members to commit to the vision. When those day-to-day things come forward and we have to make decisions, all right? All right, thank you very much, everybody and have fun. Yes, council members will need to stay, planning commissioners, feel free to. Tell you, we'll, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute recess. So for the record, we are on recess until nine oh seven, the time right now is nine oh two. Testing. Testing, testing, okay, good. All right, we are back out of. I'm muted, okay, that's fine, but Chambers can hear me, all right, we are back out of our recess. We are now going to go into executive session. For an initial five minutes. This is for pricing of property acquisition person to RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten, some section one subsection B. Again, we're gonna do this for an initial five minutes beginning at nine oh nine PM. If we need to extend, a statement will be made in this remote session and also physically out in the lobby. We are now in executive session for an initial five minutes. Turn my mic on. We're getting an echo. Okay. So we're, we're transmitting in good? If you're in the, if you're in the audience in this meeting, just hold a moment, we're just working on some technical issues. Okay. Okay, and. Do we have anybody in the, in the audience? I haven't heard it say we're recording, that's a good point. Oh, perfect, thank you. Oh, right there, okay, so much for the eagle eyes, okay, we are back out of the executive session, I'm sorry for the delay for anybody that was watching this for a couple of minutes while we were just trying to figure out where things were plugged in. We have no further business this evening unless there's objection, we are adjourned. We have no objection, have a great week, everybody, and thank you all for joining us, we're adjourned.